The June 16th, 2014, meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners will please come to order. After we have the invocation, we're going to have to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Layla Lind. She is six years old. She is tiny Miss C. Wayne Collier for 2014. She is a rising kindergartner. I mean, no, she just completed kindergarten. So she is a rising first grader. And she'll start first grade in the fall. And I understand that she has six reptiles.
Yeah.
Did you bring any with you, baby? Very good. Very good. You are very brave. Stand, please, with me for the invocation, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we join tonight to conduct the business of this county. We ask that you keep us ever mindful of our duties, our responsibilities, and the fact that we are to do the best that we can to serve all of the citizens in Cumberland County in a thoughtful, financially and fiscally responsible way. We realize that we cannot provide for the needs of all citizens all of the time, and we realize that you hold us all in the palms of your hand. We ask that you look out for those who daily take care of us and who find themselves in harm's way, and we ask that you also remember their families and those who are always in need of prayer. For these and all other things that you always provide for us, we are grateful. Amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lind? Come around here. And to her parents, her mother is a county employee and her father is an employee of Cumberland County Schools. Thank you so much for coming. The public comment period is from 6:45 to 7 o'clock. We're given an extra six minutes for that tonight if we have that many speakers. I ask that you come and when we have the public comments, that you be ever mindful not to call anyone's name or to otherwise, I don't know how to say that nicely, but just speak in generalities. I need, next time I do this, I'll have it all written out and I won't be stumbling over it. Thank you so much. Do we have speakers for tonight?
We do. We have two speakers.
Oh, two. We've got enough time. Good.
Our first speaker is Stacy Carr.
Hey.
I don't know if I can deliver this speech. I'm going to knock some of it out, but I wrote it down.
Okay.
Thank you for listening. Good afternoon. As you all know, my name is Stacy R. Carr III. I'm here, well, first a little history. Straight out of high school. I went to work for Horns Furniture 12 years. Although I made plenty of money there, it just wasn't enough action for me. I then became the Strategic Outside Marketing Director for Purvis Brothers Ford, where we made the, as a team, made the 500-per-month Gold Club three of the four years I was there. Didn't really like the way they'd done business. I thought it was wrong, so I left. Three months later, I signed a one-year contract with Roddy Jones and the Cape Fear Wildcats and challenged to help create an arena football team right here in our home city Fayetteville. After that, with all contacts made thus far, I created on the town TV in Fayetteville with Garner White Video. Wow. We did this for years, just very hard work with determination, paying our penance, and with great sponsors and too numerous to mention, we financially scraped by. Then it came the time when both Garner and I thought that we had made it. We had finally gotten a big, big break. There was a bid for a TV show for Fayetteville, something that we were already doing, opportunity, excuse me, TV show about our area came to fruition. We had worked very hard for this opportunity with little or no financial assistance from the city or county, trade only. We liked it. I hope you all liked it. We worked in the public, private meetings and private meetings, to ensure we would get our big break. Unfortunately, the city decided to do the show not with us, but I'll scratch that. Escala Scoop took the airwaves. We couldn't believe it, our baby that we had nurtured for years, we thought, was gone. I personally was distraught. Shortly after that, my father became terminally ill. While I was trying my best to put pieces of on the town TV and my marketing ventures back together, it became just too much. I just gave up. I became ill and depressed as I took care of my father. 16 months later, he died. I became a recluse, a sick, depressed recluse to my hospitalization this past December. I remember the doc saying, I was on the stretcher, he said, "Son, do you want to live?" I replied, "I don't know." He said, "Well, never mind. Forget it for right now." I'll never forget what he said. "What do you say? I just save your life right now, and then you can think about it all." Since then, I have plugged into a higher power with help that has led me down a path that I could never imagine. With open mindness, I have received yet another gift that I am able to use in all my affairs. For this, I am truly thankful, for that no matter what comes my way, my Holy Spirit will prevail. Now I have crossed my personal timeline for spiritual wellness, and I am ready to serve in any capacity needed. I thank you for listening, and I would like to serve on the Parks and Recreation Board, and I would also like to serve with the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council and also the cemeteries, especially in the Stedman, Vander, and Eastover areas where I grew up. And I thank you for listening, and I hope you will help me.
Thank you so much.
Help me help you to bow ties back.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker.
Since I allowed, I'm sorry, I allowed an extra minute.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I didn't stop you. For the next speaker, I will allow, if needed, an extra minute.
Our next speaker is Harmony Sal.
Hello.
Hello.
I wrote a letter. Sorry?
Pull the microphone down.
I wrote a letter, and it's going to be the best I could do, just to read it. It's concerning my daughter and everything that I've been through, that she's been through, and can't seem to get any resolution. And, well, it's just, it's just, okay. Well, hello, I have spoken to sent letters to many agencies and advocates. I have yet a resolution. I was informed by someone to contact your office about my problem. The problem mainly involves my daughter, involves physical child abuse that was confirmed by Cumberland County DSS. There was also another form of abuse that was investigated after the physical. The investigation was conducted in Lehigh County, Pennsylvania. The information was sent to Cumberland County since that is where the abuse happened. The abuse was substantiated by Lehigh County. Unfortunately, those confirmations were not enough to keep the victim safe. There is a second child in the home that was removed for a year by a family member during the investigation. DSS did not help with any legal action, only an assessment. The police department refused to help considering a detective put a hold on the case. The information was in a computer during the time to have the perpetrators arrested, but yet they said they couldn't do anything, that the detective had the case on hold. So then, well, it got unsubstantiated. The child does not see her mother, which is me. The child's been informed not to refer to her mother as her mother. The child begged not to go home with the perpetrators. The child had a history of extreme bad hygiene while leaving with them, teeth not brushed for weeks, smell of bowel movements, H1, she had a H1N1, lice, dirty clothes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Ma'am, I hate to interrupt you. This is public comment period, but I advise you not to mention the specific name of a child that may be substantial for investigation and probably not provide too many details of that.
No.
But if you're giving a lot of information, because I think you're talking about your child, so.
Yeah.
I'll just advise you not to do that.
All of this was documented and seen by an agency all here in Cumberland County, and no one did anything about it. Child pleaded, begged, showed so many evidences, and no one did anything and still won't do anything. I had an attorney, okay, but ever since I testified against them, it just seems like no one wants to take my case anymore and has verbally said that to me, actually, in one case. The child's been severely damaged in many ways. The father and stepmother have custody. I've done nothing to not have custody. I have no felony background. I have no child abuse things against me, no self-abuse against me, you know? So, you know, I mean, I've been to legal aid. I've done a lot of footwork, extreme amount of footwork, I mean, to the point where I have to call priests on the telephone anonymously for their help just to stay calm about the fact that I just can't go knock on their door and get my daughter. Okay? I'm here, and I've been referred here finally, and, well, I'm just going to leave this letter with the clerk, so.
Is it a copy? Is it the only copy that you have?
No.
Oh, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Madam Chair, we have no further speakers.
All right, then the public comment period is adjourned. Ms. Cannon?
Yes, ma'am. I do have a change for the agenda, please. If possible, we need to remove item of business number five, which is consideration of a lease with Alliance Behavioral Health Care.
Delete.
Remove it. Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve of the agenda.
All right. You've had a motion, and a second, those in favor of approving the agenda.
Question.
A question, please, before we vote.
There is one. I need to add an item, a budget revision. I apologize. It would be budget revision number 14, 415, which is a budget for the JCPC program in the amount of $30,068. And due to the state deadline of today for reconciling the budget, the county budget with the state budget, we're asking that this budget revision be added to the agenda. Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion with that change, but I do have a question on that real quick.
All right. Make your question.
Ms. Cannon, there's already one for the juvenile crime prevention program in our agenda on a budget item. Is this in addition to that, or is this in lieu of that?
It's in addition to that. There are several JCPC programs. There are numerous ones, and this is for a different program under the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Okay. Madam Chair, with the changes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, you've heard the motion and the second, those in favor?
I have a question now.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Where do you want this fit in? You want this in the consent agenda? You want it separate item?
Consent agenda, please. It would be budget revision number 14.
14.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes noted. Glad to have you down.
It's been moved and seconded three times now that we approve the agenda with the changes that were made. Those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Melvin Edge, Chairman Council, Commissioners Faircloth, Keith and King. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Evans. Item number three. Yes, ma'am. That is a public hearing. Are these, are all the cases uncontested? That is correct.
Yes, and there's no speakers in opposition. The Planning Board recommended approval on all three.
Madam Chair, if there are no speakers, I would recommend that we follow the recommendations of the Planning Board on all three cases.
All right, if we could go ahead and approve that item, then I'll back up to another one. I'll second your motion. Are there questions about the motion on item three, the public hearings? If not, those in favor?
Madam Chair.
Before the record, Madam Chair, Commissioner Edge, your motion is to adopt both of the motions recommended by the, in each case.
That's correct. Both motions, all the recommendations, Planning Board.
And that was my second. Now, did we approve the consent agenda? I thought we did. All right, now, we need to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, madam.
Second, those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm big enough to say I made a mistake. Whenever we approved the agenda and I voted against the agenda, I did that in error. So I would like to show my vote as being approval of the agenda.
So that would make the vote unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's what threw me off. I thought you had a question that I didn't ask.
I'm sorry. Please forgive me.
Item D is a minimum housing code enforcement case.
Oh, Jesus, what is wrong with me? 3D.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
MH 280, 2013. Property owner is Eunice Stefan Stevens. Property located at 5007 Carolina Horn Drive in Fayetteville. I have, she came by the office this morning and she did sign a consent to demo, but I still wanted to show you all what we're looking to seek a demo for. So that's...
Too fast? Help me. I'm having trouble. My good technology. 23. Does this sound Adobe? Mm-hmm. Well, I thought I was crazy.
It's definitely working different than it was.
I thought I had done something wrong.
I'm seeking demo in 30 days. I don't...
All right.
Is your...
Let me go ahead and open the public hearing. Are there speakers? There are no speakers. Close the public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Motion?
I move that we adopt the order and report the minimum housing inspector, that's the true facts in this case, and we order property owner to remove or demolish the dwelling within 30 days, and that we order the inspector to remove or demolish the dwelling if the owner fails to do so, and impose a lien on the real property for the cost of such action, and that we direct the clerk to incorporate the foregoing findings and orders and ordinance certified by the chairman and record the same in the registered deeds.
Second.
You've heard the motion and the second. If there are no questions, those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E is a public hearing on the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, and I'd like to recognize Ms. Lisa Shirley from the Sheriff's Office.
Good afternoon.
I apologize. That's her maiden name, Lisa Blouser.
Mrs. Blouser.
Mrs. Blouser.
Blouser. Thank you.
The Sheriff's Office has been awarded a grant with the U.S. Department of Justice from the Bureau of Justice Assistance. The Sheriff's Office and the City of Fayetteville jointly received this grant. The Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant is awarded to local law enforcement agencies to support local crime reduction efforts and improve public safety. The Sheriff's Office amount, as determined by the U.S. Department of Justice, is $50,027. The Fayetteville Police Department will receive $108,261 for a grant total of $158,288. One of the requirements for this grant is that a public hearing be held for use of these funds. The Sheriff's Office, which has received this grant in the past, will continue to utilize these grant funds to connect computers and deputies' cars to the FBI and FBI databases. This allows deputies on the road to retrieve information on license plates, driver's information warrants, driver's license photos, and other various information. The connection uses wireless technology to download this information. The city will use the funds to purchase cameras for the current agenda that they have for crime control there. If there's any suggestions or questions, I can take them at this time.
All right. Are there questions? If not, then I'll open the public hearing. Are there speakers?
There are no speakers.
And I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move that we approve the grant as presented.
All right. Been moved and seconded that we approve this grant. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under items of business, item number four is consideration of Bullard Circle preliminary assessment resolution. This item, Commissioners, is a preliminary assessment resolution based on payment terms of 15 years at 6% interest for the Bullard Circle residents. If you have any detailed questions, Mr. Jeffrey Brown is here and will be able to answer those questions.
All right. Are there questions of anyone?
Madam Chairman, comment?
Yes.
First of all, I'd like to say that I think there was a lot of good understanding and cooperation between the government bodies on this. And Ms. Cannon, upon your recommendation, I appreciate, because of these homeowners, through no fault of their own, we gave a reasonable, if not even lower, interest rate than traditionally comes, and a very, very reasonable annual installments, which is also longer, and the ability to pay off without interest. So I think that we did the best that we can with a very bad situation. And Madam Chair, I just wanted to take the moment to say that, you know, this was a joint effort, and I think all the governing bodies worked really well together on this.
The governing body, well, three bodies.
Yeah, and PWC Commission also.
Thank you, and thank you for your comments, and I will entertain your motion.
Motion to approve the preliminary assessment resolution.
Second.
And set the public hearing for August 18. Thank you, Commissioner Edge. Yes.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
At 6:45.
At 6:45. That's right. At 6:45. Thank you.
Item, the next item is consideration of approval of the fiscal year 2015 Cumberland County budget ordinance, and I'd like to recognize Ms. Cardenali, our Finance Director.
Good evening. The board did approve the recommended budget ordinance at its June 10 meeting, but I wanted to make you aware, you should have a sheet at your place that says adjustments to the fiscal year 2015 recommended budget. I wanted to make you aware of these adjustments that are primarily the result of capturing actual data in place where we had estimates before. Two items to bring to your attention, I just want to note that the Detention Center Expansion Fund does not change that project in dollars at all. It's just a mechanism for us to keep that fund open until all the paperwork can be resolved in the next fiscal year. That's the only change here. The item that I do want to bring to your attention is the sixth item down in that expenditure changes column, which is a $3 million change to the general fund beyond the recommended budget that you approved. This adjustment is allowing up to $3 million to use to purchase a building for Fayetteville Technical Community College. This adjustment would authorize the use of fund balance until such time as the county can enter into an installment purchase contract to borrow these funds. At their meeting earlier today, the FTCC Board of Trustees approved the purchase of property not to exceed $2.9 million pending the results of a property appraisal. That appraisal is not available yet. It is supposed to be available later this week. Earlier this month, I did advise FTCC that the county would need that appraisal in order to proceed with the project, so they are aware of our expectations. An environmental assessment has been completed, is my understanding, and no findings were found from that appraisal or assessment. So given that the appraisal is still outstanding, it is my recommendation that these adjustments be approved and this one item of $3 million for FTCC be approved contingent upon the appraisal being equal to or greater than the purchase price of the building. And I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Listen, I have a question. As I understand...
Listen, I have a question. As I understand it, this has to go before the local government commission?
When we borrow the funds, it will, yes.
So when they complete the appraisal, is when that goes to the, if it's within their limits, it goes to the local government commission?
What we will do is start the process in August. We will do a reimbursement resolution and start the process to take the borrowing to the LGC. We will basically cash flow it through fund balance until we can get the borrowed proceeds from the bank.
Mr. Keith.
Thank you. Ms. Cardinale, keep understanding our threshold for our fund balance.
Yes.
This is over and above. Where does that put us as far as our threshold?
We actually would not transfer these funds until July 1, and then we would replace them with borrowed funds in the next fiscal year, so it should wash everything in the next fiscal year and not have an impact on the bottom line fund balance. We're just temporarily going to provide the cash until we can borrow that money through a bank.
Okay, then I'd follow that up with how does that work with our debt service as far as our capacity to borrow?
Right.
This is a pretty healthy borrow.
Well, what will happen is, we already provide some funding to FTCC annually. They have agreed to allow those funds to go towards the repayment of that debt service. So there was only a very brief window where the county would be contributing, I believe, about $200,000 for two years to this project. Other than that, it will be repaid. Instead of sending the money to FTCC, we will use it to pay the debt service.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Keith.
I'm just curious, this $3 million here, that was not on the budget that we approved earlier?
No, sir.
I'm sorry, what's that again?
No, sir.
So when we adopted the budget, we didn't, that was not included?
No, sir.
Well, the same way that we put this in here, could any money be put in for employees? Because it wasn't in there before.
This is nonrecurring.
I'm just asking, can any money be put in there for the employees?
We have not identified any recurring revenue that can be put in for employees.
We found $3 million.
We are fronting $3 million until we can get it back from the bank, and typically we would not borrow money for employees from the bank.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you.
But you do feel me?
I do, absolutely, I do.
We all feel you, we all. We feel you loud and clear, and we all agree that this is something that we would just love to-
We did find $3 million, though, just making that point.
No, we didn't, well.
It was generated.
Well, this is fund balance, so it's not technically additional-
One-time money.
Money.
You understand it's coming back, right? You understand?
I do. I got it, I'm there.
Okay, all right.
I'm all over it.
Trying to make us all feel bad.
Oh, I'm, when I saw that $3 million, I got excited.
Just trying to make us all feel bad.
All right, Mr. Evans?
Quick question, and I remember discussing this, but I'm just curious to know, if we had, if we had not approved the budget when we did and continued talks about it, would this have been included without having to make an adjustment tonight?
We always have a few minor adjustments because there are items like, in, can you, you want to?
I think specifically, we were waiting for today and the action taken by the Board of Trustees at the community college.
Okay, and the budget was to be approved, what date? By what date?
By June 30.
By June 30, and the date is?
I believe it's the 16th.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We get that too, Mr. Evans. Loud and clear. How long does it take to prepare budget ordinance?
We have the budget ordinance already prepared, and we try to keep that up to date through each meeting. So this would be, and a revision to really the ordinance that you approved on June 10.
All right.
Does that answer your question?
And it changes daily throughout the budget process based on new hires, retirees, so it's constantly changing.
All right.
And may I add just one thing, Madam Chair?
Go right ahead.
The General Assembly is still in session, so there could be something that might affect this budget that we don't even know about yet, so I just want to make that point.
Yes, Mr. Edge, and I think we have, we implied that if we needed to come back together for a called meeting, we would, because you're absolutely right.
Madam Chair, if there are no further substantive questions or comments, I would move that we approve the fiscal year 2015 Cumberland County Budget Ordinance.
May I ask you, with the stipulations made by Ms. Cardinale?
You mean the adjustments?
Yeah, if this isn't, wasn't this-
Regarding the $3 million contingent upon the appraisal being equal or greater to-
Yeah, the intent of my motion was to include this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Those in favor? I'm sorry.
I just got a question. If the appraisal doesn't come back, what do we do?
Then we will not be able to fund the purchase of that building. We will not be able to buy that building for the community college.
And they understand that?
Yes, sir. I've made that, I believe I've made that clear in conversations.
Or if the appraisal comes back lower, we will not finance, we will only finance up to that amount.
Correct.
Is that, that in part of understanding as well?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions?
Before the vote on the budget, is this before Commissioner Faircloth's motion?
This is discussion on the motion, is on the-
Okay. No, I, what I wanted to say was, and I guess this is to our manager, I wanted to say to you, Manager Cannon, that the vote that we had taken, preliminary vote that we had taken earlier in our adoption of the budget, and when I voted against it, it was no reflection on you and what I thought that you and your staff had done. I think that you're superb in what you do, and I think the budget, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Those in favor of the motion as stated?
Voting in favor, Commissioners Melvin, Edge, Chairman Counsel, Commissioners Faircloth and Keith. Voting in opposition, Commissioners Evans and King.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven is nominations to boards and committees.
Joint Appearance Commission is the first one. Is there a nomination for the Joint Appearance Commission? Anyone ask me to do that?
Madam Chair, I would nominate Sheila Wilson, who is eligible for reappointment to the Joint Appearance Commission.
Okay, thank you. Cumberland County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one vacancy. Mr. Faircloth?
Madam Chair, the United Way, or nonprofit individual that's being recommended is Linda Blanton, and I would place her name in nomination.
All right. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Mr. Scott Pope.
Mr. Evans.
I apologize.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Evans had asked to make the nomination, please.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to nominate Mr. Stacy Carr.
Madam Chairman, these are actually appointments, not nominations.
I'm sorry, I knew that already. I just wanted the people to hear their names again. Mr. Edge, now that we have listed all of the names, would you make the formal motion, please?
I'll be happy to make the motion, but I think it's permissible for a nomination to be made now. So if Mr. Evans wants to make a nomination for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, he certainly can do that before I make the motion for the appointments. We'll vote on those, that's what will happen.
Yes, sir, I would like to make the nomination. I would like to nominate Stacy Carr for Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, in addition to the names that we already have there as nominees.
Yeah, you can do it.
Okay, we are appointing two people. Mr. Evans has nominated a third person, therefore we would need to vote on these three nominees. And the nominees are Scott Pope, Ashley Hankins, and Stacy Carr.
It just seems that the other two nominees don't have a chance to put themselves out there as Mr. Carr. And I've known Mr. Carr for a long time, and I think he's a solid guy, but it seems to be a little silent right now.
But it is legal, and we have done, there is a precedent for it. We have done it before. So therefore, we have three nominees. You may vote for two of the three nominees, okay? Those in favor of Scott Pope, please raise your hand.
Please keep your hand raised. Commissioner Evans, Ed Melvin, Commissioner Edge, Chairman Counsel, Commissioner Faircloth, Commissioner Keith, and Commissioner King.
And for, the next one is Stacy Carr.
I'm sorry, who was that prior vote for?
Scott Pope.
Okay, and so we're doing Mr. Carr next?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Can I see your hands, please? Thank you. Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Melvin, Chairman Counsel, Commissioner Faircloth, and Commissioner King.
And Ms. Ashley Hankins.
Commissioners Kenneth Edge, Commissioner Jimmy Keith.
So the two nominees are, the two appointees would be Scott Pope and Stacy Carr. And hopefully for the next vacancy, we will approve the third one, please. The second one. At this point, I would like to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting. And I would like to open the Over Hills Park and Waters Sewer District Governing Board meeting, if I can find the agenda. I'm having trouble with my new agenda.
Consent agenda. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Unanimous.
I move that the meeting be adjourned. I need a second, please.
Second.
Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Now, I will close the Over Hills Park and Waters Sewer District meeting, and we will reconvene the regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Item nine?
Madam Chair, before you leave item eight, and it may be that I just missed it, I think there was a motion made to appoint Linda Blanton to the United Way, to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, but I'm not sure there was an actual vote on it.
Did we vote on it yet? That's okay, we voted twice on everything else, that's all right. Those people in favor of Ms. Linda Blanton for the United Way, please raise your hands. Is it unanimous?
It is unanimous. Was there a second to that vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Somebody down here seconded it. Thank you. Now, I move that we go into closed session for an economic development matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11 (A) (4), and personnel matters pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11 (A) (6).
Second.
Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Closed session.
Second. All in favor? Motion adjourned?
Second.
All in favor? Meeting's adjourned.